All right, roll call please.
Alderman Larson?
Present.
Alderman Rivera?
Present.
Alderman Cunningham?
Present.
Alderman Conken? Alderman Moiseo?
Present.
Alderman Figueroa? Alderman Newsom?
Present.
Alderman Tempest?
Present.
Alderman Needham?
Thank you. President of the Council for could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'll start the meeting as I usually do with my mayor's comments and they're a little bit longer tonight because I have quite a few issues that I wanted to discuss. And also, I will be opening the kind of discussion on revenue generation sources that we're hoping to kind of all put our heads together and figure out some ways of helping offset some of the issues that we're having with the city of Waukegan regarding revenue. And unfortunately, I left that thing back in my office. I'll have to get it. You won't be able to find it. Okay. First and foremost, I'm sure that I speak for his family, friends, and colleagues here at the city of Waukegan when I say that we're all glad to see our friend Greg Moiseo back with us tonight, well on the road.[143.06][143.06][applause] Well on the road to a full recovery from the issues he faced with a sudden heart attack that occurred several weeks ago. So Greg, we're very happy to have you here. Secondly, Alderman Figueroa is not with us this evening due to a death in his family and we send our condolences out to him. And I also want to express our condolences to Fire Department Chief Dan Young and his wife, Chris, upon the death of her father, David -- I'm going to try it, Weagle or Weigle? Well, I gave you both, so hopefully it's one of the two and I'm sorry if I got it wrong, who passed away at the age of 68 on August 21st. So Dan, our best goes out to the family on that. I want to announce that an agreement with Waukegan Township has begun that will see their staff assisting the city with the lawn cutting at some of our abandoned or foreclosed properties across town. They have already completed their first projects and even sent us some before and after photographs to confirm that the work had been done. I want to thank Township Supervisor Patricia Jones for her efforts and Russ Tomlin and Tom Haggerty for working so hard to make this all happen. Our partners at Fist have solved their initial insurance issues and will be moving forward to assist us in this effort as well. I would like to address an issue that I have personally witnessed numerous times across Waukegan and is one that seems to be a growing problem around town. Last night, I witnessed a crowd of 12 to 15 people, mostly younger people, but some that appeared to be in their twenties, walking down the middle of one of the streets in my neighborhood, willfully blocking traffic from moving down the street. They were spread out wide across one entire lane of traffic, ignoring the passable sidewalks just feet away from them, and were even walking with two very small children at the back of the pack. This was late in the evening and in the darkness, it was very difficult to see them. They were yelling at and swearing at motorists who were trying to drive around them. I approached the group, displayed my badge, and asked them to get out of the street and use the sidewalks. They initially did so with some reticence, but as soon as I drove away, they moved out onto the street and began taking up the whole lane once again. I summoned police assistance, but by the time a squad arrived, they had vanished down a side street. I asked the officer who did arrive if this was a problem that our law enforcement officials were encountering with some regularity, and he stated it was. In fact, he said most of the contact they have with people on an ad hoc basis was this sort of illegal use of the streets as a walkway. I have seen mothers with children in tow walk right out into traffic seeming to dare motorists to strike them in some perverse game of chicken. I have seen young men do the same right downtown at the intersection of Grand and Genesee, nearly causing a series of collisions. Well, I have to say that this behavior has to stop before someone is killed by walking in the street or a terrible automobile accident occurs when a motorist tries to avoid such individuals. I have instructed Chief Greathouse to order officers to begin issuing citations for such activity, and when children are put into harm's way, to treat the matter as the endangerment of a child and push the issue into the courts and into the hands of DCFS. I will be asking Alderman Figueroa to work with Corporation Counsel and Chief Greathouse to craft a strong new ordinance that clearly defines safe pedestrian use of streets and sidewalks and sets forth potentially harsh penalties for violations of such an ordinance. Tonight, we have set aside a block of time to speak to the issue of raising revenues for the city of Waukegan. I ask that each member of the city council submit a couple of ideas that we could then analyze and then quantify the impact they might have on our budget. The reason that I am doing this is because our revenue trends are continuing to decline and we must begin to address what we are going to do to head off or minimize further budget shortfalls. I asked our chief financial officer, Tina Smagalsky, to prepare a monthly report on our financials and provide them to each of our aldermen so that they could keep track of our trends. The latest report she submitted was disheartening to say the leaf -- the least. Now unfortunately, when I ran out of my office, I left my copy of the report behind. But I will tell you, now unfortunately, I had redlined some of my stuff in there, I will tell you that some of our revenues are dropping by 39, 49, 50 percent and more. We are getting hammered out there. And it doesn't seem to be abating. It seems to be getting worse. So it is something that we are all going to have to work together and think together to provide a solution for. Now, this is important as we move through the meeting and we deal with the agenda item heading under Genesee Theater that is provided as the 2010-2011 budget for that facility. And it'll make you understand a little bit better why we're in some of the cash problems that we are in. Before our aldermen proceed, I would like to list a few areas where I feel the city can leverage assets or make changes in order to raise significant revenues. Following my comments, I will ask Corporation Counsel to speak to a revenue generating mechanism he has crafted that can also have an impact on our budget shortfalls. First, I believe that we can begin a tax on poured and packaged alcoholic beverages sold in the city in a range that goes from 3 to 5 percent that will help bring in additional revenues but will not impact the competitive nature of our local establishments. Second, we must address the price that we charge for parking in our municipal lots in Waukegan. A two-tiered price that raises all rates but is lower for residents and higher for out-of-town users for our monthly passes should be examined. I would suggest a super pass that would allow users to park in our lots as has been done under the current system, but will also allow them two hours of free parking on the street in metered locations. We must assess the true cost of maintaining not only the lots at the Metro Station but also maintaining the station itself. It is beginning to fall into disrepair and since Metro does not fund refurbishments or new stations any longer, we need to assess just how much it should cost to park in the premium lots located there, which also happen to be right on our lakefront as well. The station itself, which has the second largest ridership along the entire North Shore, should be hosting a more profitable food and beverage supplier. That service should be put out to bid and the city should be doing everything possible to attract a brand-name corporate presence there. Our downtown garage hosts two commercial spaces that have remained empty now since the building was finished. The refusal of the city to prepare those spaces for commercial use has probably cost us tens of thousands of dollars in rental and tax revenues. We need to make the nominal investment necessary to provide the proper sanitary and water services to that space in order to make it attractive to potential end-users. Every morning and afternoon, hundreds of people walk by that corner and go directly into the county building where they purchase their coffee and other foodstuffs at the Starbucks and cafeteria facility in that building. That is a market we should be capturing and we should be prepared to make the investment necessary to attract a competing business into our space. We spent several million building that garage. It seems short-sighted not to be willing to spend up to $100,000 to make that investment profitable. The Genesee Theater, a topic that will come up later in tonight's meeting, is underperforming badly. Nearly $23 million went into that building and it is costing the city over $900,000 a year, including debt service, to operate it. I believe that the time has come to give due consideration to the idea of either privatizing the operations or selling the theater outright. If we were to sell it, the deal could be structured as an owner-financed plan where we could build an upfront payment into the price to cover some of our past costs, then require the buyer to pay our yearly debt service costs for the remainder of the life of the bonds that were used to build it. I firmly believe that the city should never have gotten into the theater management business to start with, and the financial numbers we are seeing today lend strong credence to that. Our beach is another valuable asset that the city has held on to for many years but always struggled to turn into a profitable operation. We should look at selling season passes to residents for some nominal amount, much like the Park District does with their pool, and season passes to non-residents for a higher value-added price. Allowing the Park District to operate the beach for the city is a step in the right direction, but does not go far enough when it comes to capturing the full revenue generating possibilities of that important asset. Even though this may be a highly controversial suggestion, I believe that the sale of our beach to the Park District or the Forest Preserve should be considered, especially when one considers the millions of dollars that might be raised through such a venture. Yes, we lose some control over it, but it is not as if someone is going to pick up the beach and take it away. In fact, those bodies have far more skill and experience in running, improving, and maintaining recreational facilities than the city does. Any such sale could include provisions to provide Waukegan residents access for the same rates that the aforementioned residence season passes would be valued at. Our land assets must be marketed as soon as possible. We have engaged with Shaw Development to market Fountain Square and should be doing the same for all of our properties along the lake shore as well. Lastly, I believe that we should be moving forward aggressively to attract a series of major motorsports events to this community. When I made the presentation to Moody's, our bond rating agency last year, they identified the potential for a car race as the one real money-making venture the city could enter into while we wait out the lakefront cleanup and the recession we are in. Up to now, we have spent nothing on this event, but in order to secure the vested interests of the motorsport sanctioning bodies and the capital investors needed to pull off something of this magnitude, we would need a feasibility study done which would gauge the interest of the Chicago-Milwaukee region in such an event. While the study is certainly not free, it would be a worthwhile investment in what could potentially be the biggest public event to ever be held in this community. As mayor, I have been extremely frugal in my expenditures of public monies, but I truly do believe that this is a small investment that could yield incredibly powerful returns in the areas of business development, job creation, and most importantly, in helping to rebuild the brand identity of Waukegan. That is all I am prepared to put forward tonight. Now, I will turn it over to Corporation Counsel, then we'll ask any of my colleagues here tonight who would like to discuss their ideas for revenue generation for city government to step forward and speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Several weeks ago, I was going through the municipal code and I stumbled across a statute that caused me to reread it to make sure I was seeing it properly. In essence, that statute permits a home rule municipality such as us to levy a tax on Lease receipts, rental payments. I went on the internet to see whether this had been done anywhere else, and it has been done in the state of Arizona. In fact, virtually every municipality in the state of Arizona taxes rental payments. I contacted the city of Mesa and asked them about their program because it had received some positive publicity. And it turns out that they tax commercial lease income at 2.25 percent and residential rental income at 1.75 percent. And that yields the city of Mesa $1.5 million per month, $18 million per year. It is one of the largest sources of their revenue, and the same goes for most other cities in Arizona. We have the power, under our statute, to do a similar thing. No one likes to raise taxes, and it'll be up to this council whether this suggestion of mine is considered very strongly. But this would not raise taxes on owner-occupied, single-family homes. Folks are struggling to stay in their homes because the taxes keep going up and up. This would tax landlords. And having done a lot of the research of rental properties over the years for a citizens group, I can tell you that the lion's share, the landlords in this town, don't live here, but they make money off properties they rent here. So I'm just going to suggest to the council that they might want to take a hard look at what Mesa, Arizona does and other cities in that state, and consider levying a tax on rental payments, receipts under leases, both commercial and residential.
Thank you, Corporation Counsel. Would any of the aldermen like to offer any of their suggestions? Yes, Alderman Rivera?
I'll comment on what Corporation Counsel said. Sure, it's going to be on the landlords, but the bottom line, the renter is going to be affected on it because, you know, the landlord's going to raise the rent. So, yeah, it affects people that are struggling. So that might be a tough one, you know, to take on. I mean, I understand his research and mine, but it's going to affect the families, the small guy, no question about it. So that's all I have to comment on.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Moiseo.
So, Newt, as I just, without getting into a too-long discussion about it, somebody owns, you know, a number of buildings, this is how much income he generates from his rent, he pays, if it's residential, he's going to pay 1.75 of his total income in a tax. Is that ballpark?
That's the rate that Mesa has. I'm sure other communities have other rates. We would be entitled to set the rate at what it's going to turn.
Right, so it's what he makes off the profit of his rental units?
It's the gross rental receipts.
Okay.
So if you get $500 a month from your tenant, you pay a percentage of that $500 a month.
And then, of course, commercial is usually a little higher.
Right.
Because it's, okay.
Alderman Cunningham?
Mayor, I had an opportunity to review a lot of the suggestions and had an opportunity to also listen to what you said. You know, I'm going to be just pretty blunt about fees and increases. I'm just not a fan of that. I'm not a fan of just going up on a person's fee just because we need the money. I've always associated anything that a customer, residents, I call them customers, some call them citizens, they're customers to me. And when you charge a premium to a customer, you should expect to get a service. So if we're talking about going up on fees, whatever the fees may be, and understand, we just did some fee increases two or three years back, though that was supposed to have been to help us balance the budget. But it looks like as you move forward into our financial situations, Genesee Theater, lawyers, and a host of other things, I would rather see us first put some accountability into some of the processes that we have right now before we start going up on fees. Is everyone being held accountable to some of the increases that's going on? I don't know. I'm pretty sure, it sounds like you and Tina and your staff is getting a better handle on that, but I think we should take a look and see exactly what is going to be needed from a dollar standpoint. Is it $2 million, $3 million, $4 million? And then, we go back and say, these are things that we can increase on. I do, I love, I like your idea, I truly like your idea of selling assets. I think that is the biggest thing that we can, that we can generate where it doesn't really affect the taxpayers directly coming out of their pockets. That Genesee Theater, selling the naming rights, many people do it all the time. Some of the bigger assets that we have out there, let's put them out on the market. The unfortunate part, the market's kind of taking a downturn, but, you know, that's one of the, you know, the risks that you have. So I enjoy that idea that you have about selling the assets, and you're absolutely right. We're not in the recreation business. I think the Forest Preserve would do a terrific job down on the lakefront with some of the land, some of that land usage. If not the Forest Preserve, the park do. That's what they do. So I think those are great, those are great, great ideas, but to just to increase people's fees, no, I think that's just, in my opinion, that's a cheap way out. That's a cheap way out. It's easy just to increase a person's fee because now they're saying, why? Why are we, what service are we giving them? That is, you know, the biggest problem that I would have with going up on someone's, on these fees that we have, particularly after we've done it two or three years ago. And understand, when we did that two or three years ago, we said, we're not going to be, we're not going to be doing this, or we're going to put on a gradual rate of increase, as opposed to a $10 or $15 bump, maybe a dollar or two every year. So, I mean, that, those are my comments, and I think we, as we move forward, I think we're going to get a little bit more ideas. But one thing I would suggest to you is this, when it comes down to service, I think there are some things that we can be doing that others try to do, and I'll give you an example. Doing the snow removal in some of our business districts. I noticed that some of the merchants that own their property, they try to shovel, they just don't do a good job. Our public work, that's what they do. What I would like to see is maybe a impact fee be brought on that where we will handle that responsibility, but yet there'd be a surcharge for us handling that responsibility because that's what we do. When you put all that, and what they do is just put the snow in the streets and public works have to come back anyway. Similarly, what they, when it comes to cleaning in front of their store, an impact fee, that's what we do. They try to, they just don't do it well enough, particularly when it has an image of the city of Waukegan. So those are good ideas and, you know, I just think we continue, we need to continue to just see exactly what's out there, but I think we need a dollar figure before we move any farther with any ideas about what we're going, we need to know exactly what we're going to need. But thank you, Mayor, it was a great suggestion.
Thank you, Sam. Alderman Rivera?
Yeah, one more. You know, Mayor, I too looked at some of these suggestions here, and there's some good ones. You know, no question about it, this prisoner processing fee. You know, I could see something like that. How much revenue that's going to generate, I don't know. But, you know, boarding services, you know, at the animal shelter, that's a good idea too, but, you know, what's involved, you know, insurance, you know, as far as if the animal were to die during, you know, the boarding, you know, those are some of the things that we have to look, look at too as well. But, you know, when it comes to the police fines and fees, you know, I just heard the county went up on their, or they're going up on their fees as well. You know, from $100, I think it's to $125. But at the same time, you know, revenues that had come in the past from, you know, our fines, yeah, of course, that's going to go down when, you know, we've unfortunately had to lay off so many people. That's going to affect, you know, the whole situation in regards to collecting fines, inspecting properties, code compliance, I mean, they're, they're trying to do the best they can with, with what they have. So, yeah, it's going to affect definitely revenue intake on that part, but, but again, you know, there's some good, good ideas in here, but again, you know, we have to do our, you know, due diligence on this, you know, and responsibility and, you know, and how much it's going to cost, you know, insurance, you know, if we're going to be taking on these things. But again, you know, fees, you know, to the taxpayers, I'm, I'm not with that either. I know we need revenue, there's, we can look at some other ways that we can increase revenues without, you know, putting a burden on, especially now in these times, these tough economic times. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Moiseo?
Yeah, I liked a lot of those ideas. One thing I think we've failed to hit on is the fact that how much we've cut our expenses. That's a revenue generator in reverse, is that we've cut our expenses. I don't have any figures on me, I'm not going to put Tina on the spot to ask her what she thinks we've cut down, but I know we have, and I would like to see how much we have cut our expenses because that, what you don't spend, you know, that, that goes back into the kitty or it helps when you don't have as much coming in. And I think we have, we have tried drastically to cut, you know, as much fat as we can out of the city and still provide the services that we can. The problem with, in my opinion, with fines and fees, fines more drastically is, and I, you do have to have the, as Alderman Tempest likes to say, the pay-as-you-learn method because that's sometimes, that's the only way people learn. The problem is, we can't find our way out of this problem. There's just not enough fines and people aren't going to pay and, you know, at the end of the day, if they go to the judge and they say, I don't have any money, I'm sure the judge isn't going to throw them in jail for some of the ordinance violations that we have. And we need to, we need to enforce them, we need to do it, because what happens is when you have quality of life, life or nuisance problems, that's what drive good people out of neighborhoods. They get tired of the same old monkey business that happens in the neighborhood from the ne'er-do-wells that we can't control or make them behave. So we have to have that because that's a quality of life issue when good people move out or people leave Waukegan because they're tired of dealing with that and their house goes up for sale, and we, we lose on that end. So we have to enforce our rules and our laws and our ordinances, we have to do that. But I think we've, we have to think of everything possible before we tax the citizens of Waukegan anymore, and that's why I liked some of your ideas, Mayor, because it's not just about the taxes and the more you read in the papers, the state is just a catastrophe. They can't get it together at all. And that's part of our problem is that we're so dependent on the state of Illinois to help us that it's just killing us. So we have to do some things on our own to figure out some ways to generate revenue or cut expenses even more if we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Alderman Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. The point you made about exploring a private-public relationship on the lakefront is one that I've brought forward before as part of our master plan. I think one of the things that needs to be explored, and I apologize to Tina for not emailing her with this idea because it escaped me to do so, but along the lakefront, when you see what, how popular camping is, you see that Illinois Beach State Park, their campground is sold out weekend after weekend after weekend for people who enjoy being close to the water. Camping is affordable for every family, whether it's a pup tent or a 35-foot pullout RV, and people just like to get away for a long weekend and be close to the water. And we have a lot of it available. I think exploring a relationship with a private enterprise, whether Jellystone or some other big RV camp developer, out along our lakefront is certainly something that should be explored. It would not only bring a lot of people through our downtown to our lakefront on a regular basis, probably eight, maybe nine months a year. But, um, you know, it's a, it's a revenue generator. And I would add that to the list, Mayor, to explore.
Well, I think that's a good example because the Dunes is the number-one state park in all of Illinois.
You can't get in there?
No, you can't. And I think that's, uh, again, you know, that may be an opportunity that we can explore. If it's not with a private group, it could be with the Forest Reserve. Something where they have experience in that as well. So, I think that's a great idea. Do we have any further offerings or opportunities?
You know, Mayor, working with the other governmental agencies, you know, like, uh, the, uh, what is it, the, uh, the harbor, you know, down there, you know, bringing in events, you know, like sail races, uh, you know. People have got to start, you know, coming up with some creativity. You know, if they would do something like that, that would bring in people from all around. Look what, uh, the tall ships, when they docked, you know, into, uh, the harbor. You know, I stopped over at Greentown that evening and they were, there was a couple of guys in there and they were working their butts off because all of the sailors, you know, the people that were involved with that, were there eating. So, you know, that generates, you know, revenue into our city. So, you know, it's, it's just not us, you know, our, our city, but all the other agencies around too, you know, to, uh, come up with some, uh, good ideas that can, you know, bring revenue into, you know, not only for them, but for all of us too as well. So, you know, I think that's, that would be a good idea too as well.
Yeah, that was unfortunate that we didn't get word about that soon enough. And that was one of those breakdowns in communication.
Exactly.
But, Dave Motley, you know, he got on his phone and started working it and made sure people know, knew where to go and to eat. And so, we were able to capitalize on a little bit of it. But, it would've been nice to have had them here for a couple of days so that the, we could've had students touring the boats, we could've had visitors coming in to, to go out on them. And it's a shame we didn't get that. But, future, they, you know, they come around every now and then. We gotta make sure we're ready for them next time. That's a good point. Well, I think seeing no more offerings, uh, you know, the goal was to have a discussion in front of the public. Let's just see some of the things that we're thinking of. Our CFO has been willing to take these ideas, put them in a matrix to see how they can impact the budget. It's gonna take a little time to put all these numbers together. As you come up with other ideas, you know, maybe after tonight, some come to you at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, tonight, something will say, ah, you know, boom. And send us an email, send it to Tina. Let her, and let's see what, how the numbers work and, and see what we can work out. I think that every one of these idea, the ideas that we heard has value tonight. They may not be politically attractive, but they have value. We are in a bind. And it's gonna take a whole lot of things to get us out of it. Because the state's doing worse, the feds are doing worse. I think everybody should look at the Tribune today. And if you look at the first section and you read on page, page four, the headline is "Out of Work, Out of Hope." It says overwhelming unemployment. And I've been talking, underemployment, I've been talking about this since I came in, about the problem we're having attracting new jobs and new jobs here. This is an important article. It sheds an awful lot of light on what we're going through and what we're about to go through. Because we haven't gone through the worst yet. It's still coming. There was a great article in Time Magazine, the last, not this week's, but the week before, about homeownership. And how homeownership has stilted the movement of labor across the United States. That people got locked into owning homes and they weren't able to follow where the jobs were. Because they took out credit on their homes. They couldn't sell their homes because of the credit. Or just the market was bad. Or they didn't want to leave their home because it was the only one that they did and they didn't want to take the risk. But, a market, a, a community or a nation of renters is more mobile. And homeownership isn't, wasn't like this back in the fifties and sixties. We had far more renter than we do now. And I think that that, it was a great article. And if anybody gets a chance to go on their website or go to the library and read that last issue of Time, it is certainly worth the effort because it really opened my eyes to some of the conditions that got us where we are right now. And some of the mistakes we all made. Because I have to be honest with you, when I was on the county board, I pushed homeownership through the county's Affordable Housing Program. I believe that was the way to go. Because it gave people equity in their lives. And I said, you can borrow against that equity to send your children to school. But, what happened was people borrowed against that equity to buy a new car. Or two new cars. And I'm just as guilty as anybody else at it too. I was a consumer, I still am. But, we went too far. And we got in over and we got to the cliff, we weren't able to put the brakes on. The truth of this is, and I've said this before, we're in for a long, long haul. And if we don't tell ourselves the truth, and if we mislead one another as to what we're involved in, then we will succumb to desperation and we will get angry and as a community, we'll fall apart. And we can't do that. And I don't think we're gonna do that. Everybody, thank you for your ideas tonight. Let's move along on the agenda. We will go to audience time. Uh, this evening, we have Linda Rickman, 420 Lawn Court. Linda, if you would please come up to the podium.
You simply have to find Waukegan on a map to see its most obvious natural asset, that it sits on the shores of Lake Michigan. Waukegan has a one-mile stretch of the most beautiful beach, natural dunes and sand as fine as any Caribbean island. This year, however, our beautiful beach was not able to be enjoyed by many because the city set the beach hours from ten AM to six PM and posted signs to that effect on July 1st. Due to complaints from the public and our city council regarding the hours, the city changed the hours in mid-July to be open from six AM to sunset. Despite the change, the old signs with the wrong hours remained, however. I called the mayor's office about this and was directed to Public Works. Between July 19th and August 24th, I left six messages for Tom Hagerty, Director of Public Works, to call me regarding the signs, but he never called. On August 25th, Steve Drew of Public Works called me on behalf of Mr. Hagerty and left me this message. Quote, "Right now, the signs are just temporary. The season is almost over and we really can't change the signs. If we change them out, it will be very expensive and we will have to throw the signs away and make new plates," end quote. Now, I'm no sign expert, but taking two signs off posts and putting white duct tape over the hours portion of the other signs doesn't cost much. The bottom line is, the Public Works knows the signs are wrong and has decided to leave them up anyway. Not only that, the city's Public Relations Department also has the wrong beach hours posted on its website. I've called them to let them know that the hours need to be changed, but to date, those hours have not been corrected. The whole idea of having websites and signs is to let people know what's going on, to provide them with information. For the city to use its signs and websites to deliberately give the public false information about beach hours is unconscionable and insulting. The people of the city of Waukegan deserve more respect than that. I believe that Waukegan is on the brink of a renaissance. The city is being promoted as an art community. We have a strong downtown presence through the Waukegan Main Street Organization and we have the Genesee Theater. If promoted properly, the beach in our undeveloped lakefront could be the wheel that will drive this movement to, forward by providing recreational and tourism opportunities and attracting new business to our city, such as a hotel with a water park or a lakefront casino. These changes and opportunities will not appear overnight. But, we can get ready now by opening our doors and letting people know Waukegan is a friendly town with nice people, that we want folks to come and see what we have, by making people feel welcome in our community, including our own residents. Personally, I think the beach should be open to the public 24/7, just like Chicago, Milwaukee and Kenosha, and that the public should never be locked off the beach. Perhaps that not, is not possible right now due to budgetary constraints, but I believe those should be the hours we aim for. Until then, I'm asking the city council to please set reasonable beach hours, such as six AM to ten PM, and to put up signs that reflect those hours. The public deserves no less. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rickman. Ms. Joyce Evans, 829 McAllister.
Joyce Evans, 829 McAllister, Waukegan. Some, just some of the walk, city problem is that if you look on your ordinance records, there's a lot of ordinance that comes through the city council that are not being enforced. Maybe if they were being enforced, you can get revenue. I went to bed Saturday, woke up this morning, Tuesday, because of a severe headache from the injury I had. And I, I had this, all weekend, I had to listen to at least ten dogs yapping. My thing is here, if you go out on gurney, you don't hear no dogs yapping. Simple reason why, they take them out, let them go to bathroom, take them for a walk and take them back in. Gurney don't allow that. So, that's one of the ordinance. Number two here, I have an ordinance in my hand, put out by the city of Waukegan. And it's the loud music, excessive noise ordinance. And that is, uh, your music is not supposed to be heard over fifty feet. Now, before Yancy left, he was looking into this, you might know something about it. But, now it has been changed to three hundred feet. That's a whole football field away. And I would like to know, if the ordinance was made, it came through this city council? And I'd like to know where that three hundred foot come from? This is the ordinance that I have here. Three, fifty feet. Now, can somebody tell me where the three hundred, that's a whole football field away? One of the officers let me see it on the screen. It's in there. So, I wanna know, where did that three hundred foot come from? It had to come through the city of Waukegan.
Joyce, that was, we brought, we talked about this earlier and we are actually moving to address that. I've asked the chairman of judiciary, Chief Greathouse is working to get that language changed. We don't, we don't like it anymore. And you, we've had this conversation, you and I have talked on the phone about this.
Yeah, but where did, how did that ever get?
You know what, to be honest with you, that, it was, we haven't changed this ordinance since I came into office. There have been no changes to it. It would, had to have been enacted on by the city council. So, I cannot honestly give you a timeframe.
This was here before you came, that's why it was trying to be changed back over. But, how did it ever get past this anyhow?
Do we?
I don't know.
We ever changed it from fifty feet to three hundred, did we? Not, not that I can remember. It's always been fifty feet as far as I know.
I can tell you this, it's been, it was being enforced as fifty feet.
Okay, how did it get into the city computer, uh, chief, may I ask?
I don't know.
I don't know when it was put in there, but there was a discrepancy that was viewed as to looking at the actual ordinance. And there is on the books in three hundred. I think initially, when that came about, um, there was a concern that if you have residents and they're, they're playing music in or they're outside, the, how far the range would be. Fifty feet was basically put in place to enforce vehicles driving by. Residents is going to a different area of enforcement. But, that is being addressed now to try to, for chailing into both, into the fifty feet range and or an although level. It is a different enforcement that is not a device that all levels.
Because what this is doing is tying the police officer's hands. When they come down there, they can't do nothing if it's not three hundred feet. So, I'll, I'll appreciate it when all this gets corrected because we're living in this.
Well, the chief and I have talked about this and I, and I'm a big believer that it, it's intrusion into the next home. That if you can hear the music into your home next door, that should trigger it. That should, because it triggers your discomfort. And that's what I'm hoping to aim towards. But, there are, there, we will have to sit down and, and see how we can structure this so that it's enforceable. But, I agree with you, three hundred feet is absolutely ridiculous.
And even when, even if it's coming from a house, I'm at home and I can, I'm on McAllister, I can hear from Wattsworth.
Right.
That's two blocks of, that's too much.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all. So, we are working on it. That has come up and I, and we did mention it to them and we are looking to redo it. How it happened, Ms. Evans, I can't answer that. I'm sorry. I just don't know when or how it was done.
And, and last?
I think that was for automobiles.
Well, the fifty feet was for automobiles, I think.
Fifty feet, three hundred feet for automobiles, I think, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, as you can see, there's still confusion up here on it, so, uh, but we will, we are working on it.
Thank you, Joyce.
Okay, um, one more thing I'm gonna bring to your attention and that is, a young lady went to McDonald's to get a job, Afro-American. They told her that she filed the application, they could not hire if she couldn't talk Spanish.
We can't address that, Ms. Evans. That's not appropriate for this body. Honestly, it's not. So, that's something that we don't.
Well, does, don't the city give them license?
No, ma'am, we don't, we don't get involved in their hiring practices.
I mean, do you give, uh?
Oh, certainly we give business licenses, but you cannot address that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up would be, um, Ms. Cherry, Sherry Pearson White, 123, is, is it Pigeon Avenue? Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to the council. Um, I'm here on behalf of Patricia Jones, Waukegan Township Supervisor. And I'm here to thank you for your presence in the previous Walk for Seniors. And we are having another Walk for Seniors this Saturday, September 11th. I'm gonna encourage you to be, to be involved. I hope that everybody is aware that it, the registration starts at nine o'clock. Ten o'clock is our kickoff, is gonna take place at Thirteenth and Sheridan. We walk three point five miles. Uh, we are partnering with AARP this year to do, um, food donations. And we're gonna be giving the food that we collect to the, what is it, the depository and the cool pantry. Uh, this is something that we were doing for the first year. Um, if anyone is interested in receiving our wonderful T-shirts that we have every year, you have to raise at least twenty-five dollars in donations to receive that T-shirt. We'll be walking again, again from Thirteenth and Sheridan to Victory Park. Um, if you have any questions, you can always contact any Waukegan Township office. They do have the information. Uh, there'll be a lot of informational booths, free health screenings. Uh, we have a lot of activities for children. Uh, we will have bingo for individuals eighteen years of age or older. And we have prizes for any and every category possible. We'll have prizes for the youngest walker, the oldest walker, the fastest runner, fastest bicyclist. So, uh, thank you very much. I just wanted to bring this to your attention and encourage you to join us again this Saturday.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the information on that. Okay, that concludes our audience time. Now, under minutes, I'll take a motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Larson, to accept the minutes of August 16th, 2010, regular meeting and executive session. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Eyes have it, thank you. Uh, next, we have resolutions and proclamations. Uh, item A was a resolution for Oxford House, which was already picked up and delivered to them. Uh, so, we have on item B, I need a motion to add item B, a resolution for the Chamber of Commerce. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Figueroa. All in favor?
Figueroa's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Alderman Newsome. I apologize for that. Alderman Newsome. I don't know why that came out that way. I am sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, thank you. If I could have the proclamation, please? Or, no, he'll read it, yeah.
Proclamation, Chamber of Commerce, week 2010. Whereas the city of Waukegan works with the businesses, merchants and industry to advance the civic, economic, industrial, professional and cultural life of the city. And whereas chambers of commerce have contributed to the civic and economic life of Illinois for one hundred and seventy-two years, since the founding of the Galena Chamber of Commerce in 1838. And whereas, this year marks the ninety-first anniversary of the founding of the Illinois Chamber of Commerce, that state's leading broad-based business organization. And whereas, the Chamber of Commerce and its members provide citizens with a strong business environment that increases employment, the retail trade and commerce and industry growth in order to make the city of Waukegan a better place to live. And whereas, the Chamber of Commerce encourages the growth of existing industries, service and commercial firms and encourages new firms and individuals to locate in the city of Waukegan. And whereas, the state of Illinois is the home to international chambers of commerce, the Great Lakes Region's Office of the US Chamber of Commerce, the Illinois Chamber of Commerce and more than four hundred and fifty-six local chambers of commerce. And whereas, this year marks the ninety-fifth anniversary of the Illinois Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives, a career development organization for the Chamber of Commerce professionals. And whereas, the city of Waukegan Chamber of Commerce was incorporated on May of 2004 and this non-for-profit, member-based organization that is founded by a group of Waukegan businesses leaders continues to foster a competitive business climate favorable to growth, prosperity and a high quality of life for our community and our residents. Now, therefore, it brings... resolved by the mayor and the members of the city council that the week of September 17th, 2010, be proclaimed Chamber of Commerce Week in the city of Waukegan. Further be resolved, assuming loss copy of this proclamation signed by the mayor and city clerk be presented to the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce dated the 7th day of September 2010.
Thank you, Mayor Sabanjan. On behalf of the Waukegan, City of Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, we thank you. We're honored to receive this, and we will keep it handy. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Carol.
We never adopted by motion.
Yeah, let's read, let's go ahead. You know, since Clyde is here, and we have a copy of it to read, let's go ahead and read that into the record, too. Yeah, if you don't mind. We, on the Oxford House?
Okay.
Sorry, Clyde. I thought it had been given, and everything was all set. I apologize.
Okay. Resolution for the Oxford House. Whereas the Oxford House was established in 1975 in Silver Springs, Maryland, and whereas the Oxford House is a concept in recovery from drug and alcohol addiction, and whereas the Oxford House, houses are Democrat, located for self-supporting and drug-free homes, and whereas there are more than 10,000 individuals in recovery living in houses at any one time during a year, with more than 24,000 living in an Oxford House during course, the course of recovery. And whereas there are over 1,200 self-sustaining sober houses utilizing the Oxford House model located in the United States, and whereas the Oxford House has 83% success rate with individuals recovering in one of their, one or more of their facilities, and whereas the Oxford House facilities have been located in Waukegan for 18 years, and whereas the Oxford House is holding its 12th Annual World Convention in September 2010 in Chicago, Illinois, and whereas September is National Alcohol and Drug Recovery Month, and, and now therefore be resolved that the mayor and members of the Waukegan City Council hereby recognize the Oxford House. Further be resolved, assuming loss copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and city clerk be presented to the Oxford House in time for the publication of the official program for their 12th Annual World Convention dated the 2nd day of September 2010.
Okay. Thank you, Clyde. Great, thank you. All right. Wonderful. Sorry about that. Now, we move on to committee reports and motions. First up, first up is Judiciary Committee. Alderman Figueroa is not here this evening to represent the committee, so his vice?
I'm not, I'm not the vice, but I do have the, all the information.
Go ahead, let him do it. He can do it, fine.
I'm part of the Judiciary Committee.
He can do it. Okay.
All right. First of all.
Senator Vice.
Yeah.
Senator.
I am.
He has the, he had the, Alderman Figueroa.
Okay, all right, fine. Good. All right, sorry. Please.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
We're all a team up here.
Yeah.
Well, anyways, Your Honor, Judiciary Committee met on, what is it, August the 30th, and the first item on the agenda is to adopt the, this is an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as potable water supplied by the installation or use of potable water supply wells, or by any other method. I know all the Aldermen should have the ordinance. Amy, before we even, you know, approve this, why don't you come up here? I know you, you talked about some changes that you wanted to make, and let me know what changes that we made. I don't have them highlighted on my, I'm quite sure Alderman Figueroa did, but go ahead.
Yes. At the latest Judiciary Committee, I did receive some feedback from the Aldermen, and they asked if I could add to, I believe it's section three of the ordinance that you have, some exemptions from the groundwater ordinance, as this would be a citywide ordinance. It would grandfather in anyone who currently has a potable water well that's registered with Lake County Health Department, and I'm getting that list in short order possibly this week. But those people have to go through certain testing standards and that to ensure the safety of the water that they're drinking. The other change was that if somebody wanted to have a potable water supply in the future, or if someone has one now and then ceases to use it for some time and then wants to start it back up, that they would have to come to city council and get approval. The main reason for this is we have different sections of the city that have this restriction, and this would allow uniformity of enforcement and, and would allow us to have a closer monitor over where all these wells are, so we ensure that the safety and health of our citizens is monitored. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Have you had a chance to try to figure out how many of these wells are out there?
Well, I spoke.
Is there any record with the county?
I spoke with the, the person at the county, and he's supposed to be giving me a map, but he told me that there's basically a handful, which is maybe four or five. Two of them, I believe, are near Sheridan Road in Mr. Tenpass's area ward, but I believe only one of them is currently in use, because what they do is they keep records of however many are registered, and then you have to have your annual testing. And if you don't do your annual testing, then they still keep you on the list of possible potential wells, but they, they have different categorizations for those wells. So, as far as ones that are being actively used, I would say probably five or less currently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
For all the questions, the motion will read to, to adopt the groundwater ordinance being used as institutional controls pursuant to 35 Illinois Administrative Code 742 dot 1015 dot in part due to settlement regarding Shell Station located on Lewis and Sunset, and in part to connect other groundwater ordinance sites to ensure uniformity and ease of enforcement.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
I would.
Oh, yes, sir, Alderman.
I thought she wanted some amendments made to this ordinance.
Did you need amendments made to it?
It's amended.
Yes.
I'd like to speak on the ordinance.
Please, Alderman.
I was present once when a gentleman on Sheridan Road wanted to put a well in down below the hill. One time, you know, that area down there was farmland. If you know the steel property from the bank of Waukegan, One South Genesee, they used to have horses down below the hill on Sheridan Road, and then when the Amstead Highway came through, it took a lot of that land away. But hell, there's enough land down there. Now, I have sheep and goats and chickens, anything you want. But city ordinance says, no, no, you know, that's in the city now, which, you know, during World War II, people had animals and chickens in their backyard. It was the war effort. We had victory gardens in our backyard. It's part of the war effort. But now, we want to tell people, you can't have a well in your backyard because the gas stations polluted the water. Well, we ought to get after them. The well on Sheridan Road almost didn't go through because their city engineer said, because gave me this groundwater nonsense. The water's been tested. It's better water than what the water plant is producing, and it doesn't have all the chemicals in it either. And you prove that well water sometimes is safer than the lake water. It don't have many of the chemicals in there that are supposed to protect us. I know the city, we can't have wells on every lot. I know that. But I really am concerned about larger areas that might come in with a lot of, a lot of land. I know out in the county, they used to have wells, and we, we brought them in. We let them keep their well to water their grass and so forth because the water quality without a sulfur in it, but they were allowed to hook up to our water to make sure they're okay, but keep the well water to water their plants and so forth. We make so many laws and so many ordinances today. Who keeps track of all this stuff? How can people live? It gets crazy. It really gets crazy. Below the hill, the man almost didn't get it if I didn't fight for him, and he should have had it just to water his vegetation down there. I, I hope, Amy, that you protected those people that had it. We also have people in the county that we should have annexed in. It would have helped our assess valuation some, but we, we put that off for a year, and let's not give up after a year or so. A lot of those people have wells. Let them keep their wells. It's good water. They're grand, they should be grandfathered in, and I would hope so, and they would have that insurance with this ordinance. And I'm just checking with Amy there to make sure, because I did bring those things up. But those points in mind, I can vote for it, but I have a little difficulty voting for it, Mayor. I just, I always thought I wanted to dig my own well in my backyard to water my garden. But the way you guys got it today, I, I got to buy it from you.
But the problem with that, Alderman, is the water that you would hit would probably be coming from a city line.
Well, I hope not.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, and then we'll have a roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Item B, Your Honor, was supposed to be, not tabled, but, you know, we took it off the, off the docket for the council, or excuse me, committee meeting, because of non-funded T-Mobile, you know, took, took back, they held the check. So, and that's the reason why, you know, we held it over in committee.
Okay.
We're trying to find out what's going on, so it shouldn't even be on this, should be on this, well, we held it over in the committee. Item C, Corporation Council Draft and Ordinance Zoning Calendar 2297 for the petitioner Edward Aminario, located at 1012 Washington Street, conditional use permit for a current, a detailed establishment. This is in Alderman Figueroa's ward, you know, with the conditions set forth. It passed in the committee, Judiciary Committee, so, you know, ISO move on this, on this item for item C. Thanks, motion.
We have a motion by Alderman Rivera, did I hear a second, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Concan. I'm sorry. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. And that could have been a voice vote, I apologize, we'll follow up on the next one.
Item D, Corporation Council Draft and Ordinance Zoning Calendar 2298, petitioner Norma Hiron, or it's either Giron or Hiron, located at 1300 North Jackson Street, conditional use permit for an auto repair facility. You know, we had a discussion on this, pretty lengthy discussion, especially in regards to, you know, the parking, in regards to the, you know, vehicles, you know. Sometimes these places have a tendency to store, you know, a lot of vehicles in their, in their lot, but we assured that this is not going to happen, and we approved it in Judiciary. And it's in also Alderman Tempest's ward too, and he approves it. ISO move.
We have a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you.
Item E, Corporation Council Draft and Ordinance Zoning Calendar 2299, petitioner Geraldo Medrano, located at 2755 Washington Street, conditional use permit for bank, for banquet facility. Again, you know, we had a lengthy discussion on this as well, with the conditions that are very serious conditions that the petitioner, Geraldo Medrano, definitely will follow these conditions. We also had asked him, and I seen the contract, on what kind of contract that he's going to be given to the parties that are interested in doing business there, and the language, I believe, is, is fine. I know Russ, I believe you had a copy of the contract as well. So, this is in my ward, this is in the ninth ward.
Is it on the most club, yeah?
You know what, I really don't want to mention that because it's unfair. You have a new business person that's trying to do business there. With the conditions that were set forth, you know, hopefully everything will, will, will go well for him. So, and that's what we're looking for. You know, I know in the past, there's been situations, but you know what, we're in a situation where we're trying to, you know, be open and have our arms open to businesses coming into our community. There are conditions set, and we're very serious about it. He knows it. We talked about all the issues of the past, and we approved it in committee, an ISO move.
We have a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Item F, Corporation Council Draft and Ordinance Zoning Calendar V dash one dash 10 Street Vacation, located at 206 Southwest Street, vacation of a portion of West Street just south of vacated Lake Street. I believe this is in Alderman Cunningham's ward.
Second.
And he approves it, and ISO move.
We have a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you.
That is all, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Public Safety Committee. Alderman Larson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Short agenda. The minutes were approved for the July 26, 2010 meeting. There was no old business, new business under the Police Department, traffic survey, handicap, harking. The, the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect handicap parking only in front of the residence commonly known as 418 Powell Avenue.
318.
We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
318.
318 Powell.
318 Powell.
No, it's 418 on the, on the committee packet.
It says three here, what's with?
It was a typo, apparently.
So, do we need to amend? Okay, I'll take a motion to amend to reflect the correct justice, 418 Powell, by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Rivera. We can do a voice vote on that. We've been motion to amend. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it to amend. Now, we will take the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo, to vote as amended to 418 Powell Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it, thank you.
Thank you. Item B was a permission for a vehicle purchase. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to use bond process for the purchase of a fire department vehicle, to waive the bid process, and purchase the vehicle under the state bid or the municipal conference bid pricing, and to solicit quotes to outfit the vehicle. The vehicle cost will, shall not exceed $33,800, and the expected outfitting of the vehicle will range from six to upward of $20,000, and they are getting bids for that, an ISO move.
We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Eyes have it, thank you.
And we had a couple information notes. We received a check in the amount of $20,875.89 from the Illinois State Police. That was a forfeiture check, and the committee did approve and pass on the approval of the architectural engineering study for the reuse of the existing Armed Forces Reserve Center located at 1721 McCary Road as a police substation, and this study will be under further review and discussion as time goes on. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Larson. Next up would be the Genesee Theater Committee. The chair is Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Genesee Theater Committee met earlier this evening, 6:02 p.m. The Genesee Theater Committee met earlier this evening, 6:02 PM. There was no old business, new business, one item. The approval of the Genesee Theater Committee budget, well, not the committee, but the budget for 2010, 2011. The committee discussed this budget in great length. And on the table is to amend the, amend the budget. And what we are going to do, or a motion to do, is to approve just the first quarter. Hopefully, Alderman got a copy of the first three months, May, June, and July fiscal year, the first quarter. And the motion is to approve the first quarter budget as amended in the amount of $232,491, and to release $82,307 to the theater. An ISO move.
We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Tempest, to approve the budget. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye, I think it's to approve the first quarter of the budget.
Yes.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
The eyes have it, thank you.
And I would like to also add that it was asked of the general manager, Gary Zabinski, to go back and, as Alderman Needham puts it, sharpen his pencil, and see if we can get that budget down a little more. I will be meeting sometime this week, or early next week, with Tina from Finance and Noel, and with Gary and his staff over at the theater, to see about bringing that budget down some more before we approve.
Thank you, Alderman Newsom. Yeah, the contract is, it's an interesting beast. And I have to say that in reviewing it, and we have been doing that, it was troubling, to say the very least. And I think that the adoption of it was probably, you can't necessarily win on Monday morning quarterbacking, but you do have to learn from it. And I think we have learned that the contract probably was not in the best interest of anybody the way it was put through. But we are learning, and we are adapting.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Cunningham. Yes, sir.
On that, on that, on that budget, the interest, and I guess this was something I, that really, I need to have answered. The interest payment, is that right, Tina? The interest payment that was being paid, that was being paid by the city, and it was not a part of their budget? Is that correct?
Yeah, Tina, please.
Mm-hmm.
The interest on the outstanding bonds?
Yeah, on that for the Genesee Theater.
Correct. Any interest related to outstanding bonds issued for the purchase of or renovation of the Genesee Theater is not included in those budget numbers.
Okay.
The debt service is part of the City of Waukegan's debt service fund budget.
Okay, I guess my question would be, wasn't the original intent, I don't, I shouldn't be asking you that, but I thought the original intent, when we took those bonds out, was for the debt and the operation of the Genesee Theater was supposed to come under their debt? How did it fall upon, does anyone, can anyone tell me how it fell upon the city? I thought that was the original intent. We weren't supposed to be paying nothing for that Genesee Theater. It was supposed to have been ticket sales, volume of shows. So, that, that interest, so, all alone, the interest payment has been coming from the general fund of the City of Waukegan?
It's been coming from the debt service fund, but it's from the property tax levy. And the principal and interest combined is about $750,000 per year.
So, when we were used to get reports on the Genesee Theater, that it was, it was doing okay, it was not, never including that, that interest payment?
I can't speak to any financial reports you received before I was here.
Well, we used to get reports that the Genesee Theater was doing okay. It was meeting its obligation. But according to this, it never included the interest payment. So it really wasn't doing okay. It has always been in the red.
It's always been in the red. It was all, it was stated that they were doing better than we expected them to do. We weren't losing as much money as we thought we were gonna lose.
Yeah, but, and with that being said, it never included the interest. They were just talking about from whatever their ticket sales may be, or how, I guess, the, the sale of the, from the vendors that were over there. It never, ever included the interest.
You mean the debt service?
The debt service. Interest, debt service, it's all the same thing to me.
It never included the debt service.
Yeah, Tina, maybe we can clarify to Alderman Tempest. I'll get right to you, sir. I, the amount that we have been basically laying out per year is about $930,000, correct?
Inclusive of debt service, yes.
Inclusive of debt service, that's right.
In principle, in principle, correct?
Principle and interest, and in operating deficit, I suppose, would be the way to look at it.
It's costing us $930 a year, $930,000 a year for the whole ball of wax.
No.
Right?
Per year, over the life of the bonds.
And costs that we've been able to substantiate as of today, yes.
But those weren't the figures that was given to us. See, that's what I want to get to. Those weren't the numbers that were given to us.
Alderman Cunningham, as we work our way through this, we will guarantee that each person-
No, some other folks have worked their way through it already, Mayor. They'd have walked away with $30 million.
We are working on numbers, so-
Yeah, they walked away with $30 million. Nobody from Waukegan helped build the place, because they didn't want to hire nobody, because they said we weren't qualified. But they can take our money, lie to us, lie to us, then move, and then sue us for overages. That's a beautiful, that's a beautiful, beautiful deal. I would love to have something like that. We all should be furious up here. That Genesee Theater was been a mess from the very beginning. We've been lied to. We've been told whatever we wanted to hear at the time, but the truth is coming out now. But it's on the backs of the City of Waukegan people. That's whose backs is on. Everybody is smiling except City of Waukegan. Now, we trying to figure this out, how all of this was never included over the years. It took Tina to come here to tell us that this money has been paid from the backs of the City of Waukegan. When we had some, and I quote, "Some of the smartest people on the face of this earth." We did a worldwide search for the, for the, for the person to handle this, but it took a Waukegan person to really find out the truth. That's what it really took. That's why we need more Waukegan people being a part of this.
Took a couple of Waukegan people.
All right, well, you too, Mayor.
Your Honor, may I speak?
Yes, Alderman Tempest. Thank you, Alderman Cunningham.
A little clarification. By the way, ours only no vote, but that's all right. I mean, we have it. It's a beautiful theater. And I wish it very, very well in the future. It does cost us approximately $400,000 to $500,000 a year to operate it. And plus, we have the debt service. We have it. I think our best intentions are to move forward, try to continue to develop it. It was supposed to be the economic engine of downtown, but what happened? We didn't get the other buildings downtown to bring the population that we should have had. And some restaurants have failed. We didn't get some restaurants up and operating at the time. But yes, the Genesee Theater is costly operation. It is a beautiful, beautiful theater, I have to say that. And I said I voted against it. I did my research, but we have it now, and I think we have to make the best of it. And I think it will turn around. You know, I think the management we have is trying very, very hard, and I think we need to support it and, and move forward. To sit here and argue about it, we gave Gary some direction tonight, to try to cut the expenses a little more, and sharpen his pencil, sharpen his management fees a little bit, and maybe even freeze his salaries over there. We're still working with that, but at this point, you know, we do have the Genesee Theater, let's get behind it, let's support it. And I see, I see the community turning around a little bit, where so many of us down the dumps about how things are going, but you know something? We will work through it. Two shall pass. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Tempest. Okay, we're done with that. We voted on that, so we're all set. Thank you. We have no old business before us this evening, no communications before us. I do want to announce that there will be a very, very brief executive session following the Alderman's time. Should only take about five minutes. And, what is that for?
Real estate.
For real estate negotiations, I'm sorry. That just was whispered to me this evening during the course of the meeting. Now, we go on to item 10. New business recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, to approve the payroll dated August 27, 2010, the amount of $1,306,361.87. Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, approved bills dated September 7, 2010, the amount of $1,518,183.70. Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item C, special bill run for the Genesee Theater dated September 7, 2010. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, that was already approved under the Genesee Theater Committee. I apologize for that. Do we have any block parties before us this evening?
Yes.
Motion to approve block parties by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Needham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Item E, adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of property by the City of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, including 923 New York Street. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
That's okay.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
We don't need this.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
One moment, please. We do need to vote. We do need to go back to item C to vote on that, to finalize the, the final amount. So, if you won't mind, we'll go back to item C, which is to approve the special bill run for the Genesee Theater dated September 7, 2010, the amount of $82,307. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No, I'm, I'm gonna vote aye, but we're just approving the-
The first quarter.
Right. Of $82,000.
Right.
That's correct.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
The eyes have it, thank you. Item F is off the agenda. Item G, adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of property by the City of Waukegan pursuant to the HUD Homes Program, including 1416 Melrose Avenue. Who's, who's ward is this in?
That has to be Figueroa's.
Okay. Well, we'll take a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Again, skipping item H, we will go down to item I. Accept a resolution to rename the Downtown Community Garden to the Madeline Fuqua Memorial Garden. A motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. I think aptly named, too. Thank you very much. Item J is a resolution to create a Greentown Waukegan Committee. And Corporation Council, would you like to speak to this for a moment, to explain what we're dealing with here?
Yes, this would simply be an exploratory advisory committee. It would have no power to commit the city to any project or spend any city money. But there's a lot of vacant property that's coming in front of us now. There's a lot of thought about doing some gardening. Alderman Tempest has talked about domestic animals down below the bluff, but I like that idea. But anyway, we'd like to get a committee together, made up of city representatives, some representatives from the community, to take a look at these various sites in, in the respective wards that might be susceptible to, to community gardening of some sort, and then to craft an idea, a proposal, a concept, and bring it to the city council, so that, so the council could discuss it and decide whether it was something that they wished to do.
Alderman Rivera.
Could conservation protection, for example, what I just gave you earlier this evening?
Yes.
Corporation Council, with protecting a, a special orchard in, behind fields of Cambridge. Could that be addressed by this committee, too, as well?
Absolutely, Alderman. That's precisely the kind of thing that the committee would, would process, study, and then bring to the council for, for discussion and action.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We have the motion to accept the resolution to create a Greentown Waukegan Committee. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Ordinances and resolutions, I don't believe we have anything before us. Nope. We will go to Alderman's time. Following that, we will have a brief executive session, but at the end of Alderman's time, for all extent and purposes, the meeting will have concluded. Wayne?
Alderman Larson.
Uh, one short thing. Let's pray for good weather this coming Saturday. We have a walk with the township seniors, and we also have the annual, well, it's almost an annual Waukegan Regional Airport Air Show. And it's gonna be a really big, fun event. There's usually 15,000-plus people that attend. Should be bigger and better than ever. There's a lot of community organizations that are volunteering their fine, or their, their time. There will be fine food and beverage available there. So get there early, because it's gonna be crowded. We look forward to seeing you on Saturday. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
I know Alderman Figueroa, if he were here to mention about the Mexican Independence Day Parade, which is gonna be this Sunday, I believe, starting at the Juarez Middle School, going down Washington and finalizing over here on, what is it, on County Street, and, and finalizing over here on, what is it, on County Street, Your Honor? Well, anyways, yeah, that's gonna be fun to go to as well. And I also want to, you know, thank God that our Alderman Moiseo is back in his chair, and I spoke with his wife. He has a wonderful wife and family, and we love him very much. So, I'm glad that you're, you're back, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham. Sam, pass. Alderman Moiseo.
Obviously, I have to send out my thanks to everyone who reached out to myself and family after my incident. There's no question that I was saved by Waukegan's finest and Vista Hospital for their quick reaction, from the time I had the symptoms to the time I had the stent put in it was sixty-five minutes, which is pretty good considering that ninety minutes is your window of opportunity. So, I want to thank everybody for that, the prayers, and everybody that called and came and saw me and all that was overwhelming. But now, I'm back to a hundred percent. Before, I must have only been operating about seventy percent.
That's kind of a scary.
So, so, so look out now, I'm back to, to a hundred percent, and hopefully, and if people don't think that, we joke about being up here, but if they don't think this job will kill you, it will. I mean, the, the stress and the strain for everybody here, and everybody that works for the city in these times is unbelievable, because we don't have, we're constantly looking for answers to try to make Waukegan better, and it's just so challenging when you just, there's just not a lot of answers out there, and, and like the mayor said, we're trying to come up with ways for revenue and expand. I mean, we're, we're, any, there's no dumb ideas, because we have to come up with as many things as we can to try to, to become as self-sufficient, because as the mayor keeps saying, it's not gonna get any better, especially when you're in possibly the worst state in the Union as far as finances, because they, in Springfield, just can't get their head out of their rear ends. They just can't do it. And hopefully, we can just keep plugging along and go day by day. But thank you for all of the well, which is much appreciated.
Your Honor, Greg, I just want to let you know, I, I go to the Y on Tuesdays and Thursdays. All of your students, every last one of them, was asking every time I go, "How is Coach Moore? How's Coach Moore?" That's, I think that's just a testament of the, how you've affected them. So, I wanted to let you know that, all right?
Alderman Newsom.
I'd just like to say, I'm thankful that Alderman Moiseo is doing well, and I sent up some prayers for him as well, so it's good to see him back here.
Thank you.
And I would also like to thank the chief. After the shooting over on Walnut Street on the twenty-fourth of August, a lot of the owners and residents came out, and the chief came over with some of the pastors, pastor from Greater Faith, pastor from Waukegan Community Church, and some of their members, and social workers from the Health Department came out and spoke with the residents that live over there. So, I just wanted to thank the chief and all those that came out to help those that were affected by this tragedy, this shooting, and the families. Some of the family members were on site, and the chief spoke. Johnny Johnson was there, and I just wanted to say thank you for coming out and letting the residents know what your plans are for that area. I did get a call this week stating that they do see a presence of the police, and they're happy to see that over there, Linden and Walnut Street area. So, again, I'd like to thank you for coming out and being firm with them, and also assuring them and letting them know what the city plans to do to try to work with that area, with the minister, the church, Waukegan Community Church, coming together and working with those residents that live over there. So, thanks again.
And I'd like to add, too, that I got a chance to meet this woman actually over Christmas. I had accompanied a number of Waukegan employees on their routes to deliver Christmas presents, and they carried furniture up the staircase into this woman's apartment where she was living off of Sunset. And her kids were so overjoyed, and they were, I mean, this was just, you know, Wendy Beschel helped organize all of this, and it was, you know, everybody was in tears every step of the way of this, and to have this woman struck down like this in our community by something as savage and random as what happened is unacceptable to all of us. And our guys are doing their best to run these people to ground and bring them in. They're working on more leads, they're close. We're not there. But if you're listening and you're the person who did it, bring yourself in now. That's the best you can do for yourself, your family, and the community. Turn yourself in now, because we will catch up with you. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. Three things. Spoke this evening on neighbors looking out for each other, and I've attended a number of block parties. Block parties are a good way to get to know your neighbors and get to know who's on each side of you, and share a little talk and out in the street there and, and get together. And then, we have our Neighborhood Watch Program, which has been going rather well lately and getting more and more of those established through the chief, and those have been very productive, and people get to know each other, looking out for each other, and the police department are looking very closely with them, giving them tips and so forth, and programs. And the other thing I find very encouraging, as I've been walking my ward, is homes that have been, went under, been rehabbed, and resold, and now occupied with homeownership. I think this is a key. And the one thing that does bother me somewhat, and I still say there's a solution to it, is Section Eight vouchers. I think we're, City of Waukegan's getting too many, and I believe that the feds need to be involved in this. I don't, I believe we're being dumped in, and I don't believe we should have to take as many Section Eight vouchers as the City of Waukegan seems to be obtaining. I would ask the Corporation Counsel once again to research that and see if he can't come up with an answer. I, I did speak with a gentleman by the name of Tom Vick, who is pretty knowledgeable in that area, and he thinks there is an answer, and he's quite concerned about it, too, as many of citizens are. But we did have a little discussion of the Genesee Theater, and again, let's support the Genesee Theater. We have some great shows coming, and let's get behind it. I think it's a great asset to the City of Waukegan, but on the other side, it, it's, it's a burden also, but we can make it go. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Alderman Needham.
Motion to go to executive.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Newsom to go into executive session to verbiage on real estate transaction. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Yeah, let's go in, because we'll be right back. Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moiseo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, we need a motion.
Hold on, hold on.
Into executive session by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Larson for purpose of labor union negotiation update. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, who, who brought us, who brought us back in?
Moiseo and Cunningham.
Moiseo, Moiseo and Cunningham?
Yeah.
Hi, Fred.
Where's Moiseo?
Hello, Fred.
Oh, my God. I had to go back in. Well, we, we just gotta do it right.
Regular session by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Newsom. Oh, he's gotta do the roll call, sorry. Roll call.[1772.12]